This conference will now be recorded.
Have we heard from Tim?
No, sir. I'll send a message now.
I saw him an hour ago at the Board of Adjustment meeting, so we know he's around. And he knows of the meeting today.
There's Tim. All right, we were all ready. All right, notice is hereby given that the Lago Vista City Council is holding a special call meeting on Monday, October 5th, 2020, at 5:02 PM as prescribed by VTC government code section 551 dot 041 to consider the following agenda items. Senator, please note, we have all of our council members in attendance. Citizen comments, in accordance with the Open Meetings Act, council is prohibited from acting or discussing other than factual responses to specific questions, any items not on the agenda. Is there anybody who has any comments, anything that's not on the agenda? All right. Number one, discussion, consideration, and possible action on the complaint filed against council member Frank Robbins regarding allegations, regarding alleged violations of the City of Lago Vista Charter in accordance with section 3 dot 08. All right. So, the complaint filed by Mr. Belay alleges violations of the city charter and the ethics policy. Each has a separate process for addressing the complaint. And here are, here is the actual complaint. Says Mayor, "The events following council action on August 10th to investigate the city engineer and procurement thereof have placed a great strain on my family, myself, and has left a permanent negative mark on my career. Moreover, these effects were made even more detrimental after council member Robbins issued a public letter to the city manager via a Facebook page called the North Shore Neighbors. My position and career have become subject to the changing political winds. Two council members, Frank Robbins and another who does not remotely have any, does not, does not remotely have any worth to his name mentioned, but I will reluctantly do so in small letters, Don Bartholomew, have used their position to, of influence to pressure the city manager to act upon my employment, make libel and slander comments upon my name and reputation, have pressured and blackmailed city council to act on baseless accusations or lack of proof. Citizens of Lago affirmed and counsel enacted a city charter that only gave power to any individual council member as quorum and nothing less. However, Frank Robbins clearly violated that. I pray that city council realizes that it has taken a lot of prayer and courage to come forth with this letter. I do not feel that it is safe, effective, or healthy for my position to continue with business as usual after the events leading up to an after-August 10th council meeting. This letter is to request for council to deliberate, as privately as possible, the removal of council member Frank Robbins, Frank, from his position as council member. If council does not remove Frank or Frank's resignation does not occur, then I request that council consider an employment contract for the city engineer. The employment contract should be completed without changing the organizational chart and providing for an agreed-upon severance package. Please see the attached exhibits for pertinent charter sections, violated accusations, proof of intent as noted below. Exhibit A, pertinent charter sections. Exhibit B, violations. And exhibit C, intent. Sincerely signed Eric Belay, PECFM, City Engineer, Department of Public Works. Notarized, this instrument was acknowledged before me on the 29th day of September 2020 by Harold Eric Belay, City Engineer and Director of Public Works of the City of Lago Vista, Texas, a home rule municipal corporation, on behalf of said city. Sandra Barton, Notary Public, State of Texas. All right, exhibit A. Counsel authority, under section 3 dot 08, city council may remove a council member from office under subsection B for willful violation of the charter and violating section 11 dot 05 of the charter. Section 11 dot 05 deals with ethics and code of conduct. The procedures called for the notarized complaint to be presented to the mayor. Counsel then can set a hearing by a majority vote. Based on evidence presented, the council can determine via majority vote the removal of a member of council. Below are the charter violations by Frank. One, violated section 3 dot 23 of the charter, which notes that no member shall have power to act individually, and no member shall give orders directly to the city manager, and no council member shall give orders directly to any other city employee. Section two, section 4 dot 01. Yeah, I see you, Frank. I'll, I'll get to you when I get through reading everything.
That's the point I'd like to make, Mayor.
Well, I haven't completely, completely finished reading the complaint, so.
That's, that's my question.
Okay. All right.
You're, you're gonna read a complaint. Will I be given an opportunity to respond to this complaint in public?
I will go over the procedures once I get through reading the complaint.
I'm concerned about the procedure that we're following at this point.
This was the procedure that was laid out for me is how to proceed with this, so.
In other words, the city attorney advised you to read the complaint verbatim?
And the exhibits.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Mayor, you're not required to read the complaint verbatim. Nothing in our rules of procedure and nothing in there prevents you from doing that. I believe a copy of the complaint has been distributed to all of the council members as required by the charter, and if they have reviewed that document, they, they would have the information they need to make this initial determination. As a matter of transparency, this document is not private, so reading it out loud is not prohibited, but it's also not required.
But I'm gonna continue reading it out loud. And then we'll proceed from there. So I am on number two. Section 4 dot 01 notes that no member of council shall act as the city manager, and under subsection B notes that the city manager, the CEO, who appoints, supervises, and/or give direction to all departments, offices, and agencies of the city and hire, suspend, or remove any employees. Three, Frank ignored provision of section 4 dot 01, which notes that the city council shall direct and supervise city manager only by a majority vote, and neither council nor its members shall give orders to or in any way exercise the influence of their office on such officer or employee, either publicly or privately. Or Frank exceeded his authority and violated section 4 dot 07, which notes that the city departments and directors shall be, all of which shall be under the control and direction of the city manager. Five, ethics policy section 1 dot 1803C, which notes that "Public servants shall not disclose confidential or proprietary information or any information they have acquired or obtained in the course of any fiduciary capacity or relationship, and public servants shall not release confidential, proprietary, and privileged information for any purpose other than the performance of official responsibilities." Exhibit B, violations. Below are the charter violations performed by Frank. Also attached are exhibits supporting these violations. Please note key words on the exhibit such as, "Eric has hurt you too much," and "Strike wanted." And I'm going public. Further below is the explanation of possible intent. However, the intent is irrelevant to the fact that violations occurred on several occasions, but it provides a broader picture for council to make a decision. Exhibit C attached, B1, that'll be, that'll be for a later time. Frank Robbins created and authorized an open letter to be posted on Facebook page called the North Shore Neighbors. This page works such that any post, you first send your post to the page administrator, in this case, Jane Brunkley. Frank violated section 4 dot 01 of the city charter by using his influence of his office to the city manager publicly. This employee information is confidential and belongs in HR. Frank violated section 1 dot 1803C of the city ethics policy by making such complaint public. Frank also violated section 1 dot 1803C of the city's ethics policy by making baseless complaints intended solely to damage an employee's reputation and force council to take note publicly. Fact of the matter is that Frank saw a weak spot with the other council members' allegations. This was his time, and he had given ample warning, as you'll see below. Excuse me for a second. Note that Frank calls this the third strike and calls for my termination. Also note the pattern below in the exhibit, which says, "Josh, Eric has hurt you enough." You will see these sayings elsewhere. In this post, my name was totally trashed, and an uninformed manner publicly complained to the city manager. Frank also ignored section 4 dot 07 in an attempt to gain public favor and outcry. Frank clearly violated section 3 dot 23, which notes that Frank cannot give orders to the city manager. I'm having to go through this, make sure some of this is, to be reserved for evidence, as opposed to just the allegations. Exhibit B3, Frank violated all the sections above when he sent an email to Josh, April 1, 2020, where he pressures the city manager, regardless of whether city manager felt pressured, where he notes, "I think some education to the council," and again to Eric, "just so that we understand it." And to be frank, if we have a number three. As I'm reading this complaint, I'm seeing some of this is more evidential than just allegations. I'm only wanting to read the allegations at this time. All right, I will go to exhibit C at this point. All right, reading the exhibits further, I don't see any further allegations. This is all evidence from here on, and that's for later on. All right. So the sole purpose for tonight's meeting is to decide if the complaint alleges a violation of the charter that is grounds for removal that should be considered in executive session. If we determine that the complaint does allege a violation that is grounds for removal, then we will set a time and date for an executive session to hold a hearing on the complaint. And that, that will require a majority vote. If we do decide to have a executive session or another session, the council member that the complaint is against may request that it be in open session. If you determine that the complaint, if we determine that the complaint does not allege a violation of the charter that is grounds for removal, then this part of the inquiry concludes. There are two important parts. Section 1 dot 1809F6 prohibits council from communicating directly or indirectly with any party or person about any issue of fact or law regarding the complaint, except at a meeting of the city council, provided that the mayor, provided that the mayor may consult and coordinate with the city attorney. And two, section 18 dot 1810 requires independent legal counsel be utilized to advise the city council and participate in hearings.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to make a clarification.
This is for regarding, to, this is an allegations regarding the ethics policy. Two important parts for the ethics policy, not the charter violations, just the ethics policy. Can't discuss it, and requires independent legal counsel. So the process for addressing the complaint. The complaint was filed by Eric Belay on Tuesday, 29 September 2020. Allegation alleges violation of city charter section 3 dot 23, 4 dot 01, and 4 dot 07, and city ethics policy section 1 dot 1803. Charter violation, this is charter violation complaint process. Sworn, notarized, written complaint charging a member of the council of an act or omission that constitutes a reason for removal is presented to the mayor or, if against the mayor, to the mayor pro tem. That has been done. Two, person receiving complaint files it with the city secretary. That has been done. Three, city secretary provides copy to member complained against and all other council members. That has been done. Four, council meeting to determine if complaint alleges violation that is grounds for removal that should be considered in executive session. That is what we're doing at this time. If so, then we will set a time and date for executive session to hold hearing on complaint. If the council member does not resign, then holding hearing in executive session to take evidence on complaint unless written request to conduct meeting in public is made by the member complained against. Council member has the right to representation in that meeting and to question and cross-examine all witnesses, but may not vote on the question of removal. Council shall, in public session, make a decision on whether the member should be removed from office and issue order setting out its decision. If, if determines by, if council determines by majority vote that removal is warranted, we will, they will declare a vacancy to be filled no sooner than the next regular meeting in accordance with section 3 dot 09. Decision is final and binding as long as made in good faith and may include lesser penalty of censure and/or fine as provided in the ethics ordinance. Section 18 dot 1810 requires independent, this is for ethics policy complaints. First was charter, this is ethics policy. Section 18 dot 1810 requires independent legal counsel be utilized to advise city council and participate in hearings. After a complaint has been filed and during the pending of a complaint before the city council, a member of the city council may not communicate directly or indirectly with any party or person about any issue of fact or law regarding the complaint, except at a meeting of the city council, providing that the mayor may consult and coordinate with city attorney. Sworn complaint was filed 9/29/20. Sworn complaint, complaint based on personal knowledge alleging a violation of this article shall specify the provision of this article alleged to have been violated and shall name the public servant being charged. That was done. No later than the third working day, city secretary acknowledges receipt of complaint and provides copy to city attorney, city council, and city manager as appropriate, and to person against whom complaint alleged. That was complete. No later than the 10th working day, which would be October 15th, city secretary shall notify in writing the person who made complaint and person against whom complaint alleged of a date of a preliminary hearing. That has been done. If city manager or city council does not hold a preliminary hearing within 20 days of receipt of complaint, which would be 10/19, it should notify, shall notify the person who made the complaint of the reasons for the delay and shall subsequently give further appropriate notification. However, we are conducting the preliminary hearing today. As soon as reasonably possible.
I'm sorry to interrupt. We're not doing the preliminary hearing today. We have not started that process.
That's what we're deciding on. I'm sorry, I thought this process was the preliminary hearing.
No, sir. You'll have to get your, you'll have to obtain outside counsel first before you get that, start that process, and you have some time before doing that. But you're, you're laying out the process. Everyone's aware. We haven't begun the ethics complaint portion of this yet.
Okay, all right. So secret. Number two, no later than the third working day, city secretary acknowledges receipt of complaint and provides copy to city attorney, city council, city manager as appropriate, and a person against whom complaint alleged. Number three, no later than the 10th working day, which is October 15th, city secretary shall notify in writing the person who made complaint and person against whom complaint alleged of a date of preliminary hearing. That is still to come. We have not set the date for the preliminary hearing, but we have until October 15th. If city manager or city council does not hold preliminary hearing within 20 days of receipt of complaint, 10/19 is the 20th day. It shall notify the person who made the complaint of the reasons for the delay and shall subsequently give further appropriate notification. Number five, as soon as reasonably possible, but in no event more than 60 days after receiving the complaint, which will be November 29, 2020, the city manager or city council, as, as applicable, shall conduct the preliminary hearing. That is still to come. D, at the, at the conclusion of the preliminary hearing, which is still yet to come, the city manager or city council, as applicable, applicable, shall decide whether a final hearing should be held. If the city manager or city council, as applicable, determines that there are reasonable grounds to believe that a violation of this article has occurred, a final hearing will be scheduled. If the city manager or city council does not determine that there are reasonable grounds to believe that a violation of this article has occurred, the complaint shall be dismissed. A decision to conduct a final hearing is not a finding that a violation has occurred. Final hearing on complaints. The final hearing shall be held as expeditiously as possible following the termination by the city manager or city council, as applicable, that reasonable grounds exist to believe that a violation of this article has occurred. In no event shall the hearing be held more than 30 days after said determination. The city manager or city council, as applicable, may grant two postponements not to exceed 15 days each, upon the request of the public servant named in the complaint. The issue at a final hearing shall be whether a violation of this article has occurred. The city manager or city council, as applicable, shall make its determination based on clear and convincing evidence in the record. All witnesses shall make their statements under oath. If the city manager or city council, as applicable, determines that a violation has occurred, findings shall be in writing, identifying the particular provisions of this article which have been violated, and within five working days, a copy of the findings shall be delivered to the complainant, if any, public servant named in the complaint and the city secretary. If a complaint proceeds to a final hearing, the city manager or city council, as applicable, may request witnesses to attend and testify, administer oaths and affirmations, take evidence, and request the production of books, paper records, or other evidence needed for the performance of the city manager or city council as, as applicable's duties or exercise of its powers, including its duties and powers of investigation. All right, I have read everything. Aaron, is there anything else that I need to be, that needs to be brought to the attention at this time?
No, Mr. Mayor, I think you've laid out the process for each of the two separate pieces of the complaint. And, and so at this point, if there, before, essentially, this item is ready for discussion, deliberation, and a decision by the council. If you, this may be the appropriate time for you to take any public comments on this item, and then proceed to a decision by the, by the council on the sole issue of whether the complaint itself alleges a violation of the charter that is grounds for removal, that should be considered in executive session.
All right, so question. Because the, I read the complaints that did include some of the background to some of the complaints, but I did not present all the evidence that was included, because that's for the executive session, unless chosen to be in a public session. But my question is, without getting into the actual hearing, discussion of it, what, what, what rights does Frank have in response to this, these complaints right now? Because I would like to, before discussing it with council, I would like to allow Frank to address the complaints, if that is appropriate at this time, or does he need to wait to see if they're an executive session?
Right. The charter does not specifically indicate whether or not the person against who the complaint has been filed has a right to provide any statements at this, at this stage. And therefore, it's within your discretion as a council to allow him to make statements. Any statements he makes, if it goes beyond, if it goes to the, goes beyond whether or not the actual complaints themselves are a basis for removal in accordance with the charter itself, would be more appropriately addressed at the time, if, if the council determines there, that a, this does need to go to executive session, but it is within your discretion to allow him to make a public statement at this time.
Okay. All right, so Frank, I'm gonna, I'm gonna hold off on giving you the, to go ahead just yet. I'm gonna open it up to council to start with and let them ask questions about the actual. questions about the actual provisions and let them ask questions and then, and then I'll let you come back and, and have a rebuttal on whether we believe it led, if it meets the requirements or not for, for removal. So council, you've been presented, I know there was a lot of reading to it, but I wanted to make sure that, you know, we have 40 something people in attendance here. I wanted to make sure everybody was clear on the procedure and, and the actual allegation. So I did read a lot. So now it is up for y'all to discuss and determine whether we need to proceed with an executive session from this point. So questions, comments?
I have a question for Aaron. So this is the city charter part of this and it speaks of removal. But in the ethics, there are different levels of response, is that correct?
That's correct. Mr. Mayor, part of section 3.08, which is the section of the charter that discusses removal from office, provides four grounds for removal, and then it discusses the process itself. That section, section 3.08 concludes with a decision by, you know, it says the decision by city council shall be final and binding so long as it's made in good faith and maybe may in the discretion of council include a lesser penalty of censure and or fine as provided in the ethics ordinance. So it does refer to that part of the process of the ethics ordinance as a potential remedy for if violation of the charter is found. But it would, in that particular situation, if it's not sufficient as far as grounds for removal, you know, those other two options, the censure or fine would be the appropriate remedy.
But on the charter violation, the only remedy is removal.
If you do find that, that there is a violation of the charter or of the ethics, any provision of the code of ethics, as those two items are spelled out, those are grounds for removal. It, it, the charter does not say that you must remove them. It, but it does outline that the, this is a basis for removal. That what it, 3.08 says the city council may remove any member of the council from office for any of the following reasons. It doesn't say that the council must remove them.
Right, so this as pertains to the charter, if we want to go into executive session to discuss this, I've not spoken with anybody about this on any level. Then we would have to say that, that that we allege that there is a violation. In order to go to executive session, we have to allege that there is a violation? Or can we?
You would have to find that the allegation that Mr. Belay has brought forth alleges a violation of the charter or of the, the ethics policy, which would fall under subsection under B for 3.08. And so it's, you're analyzing tonight, your sole job is to analyze whether Mr. Belay's filing raises, provides an allegation that is the basis for removal under 3.08. And if you, if you find that his, his documents are sufficient to raise that violation, allege that violation, then you could vote to proceed to an executive session hearing.
All right, but in this particular charter violation, if we find that there is no charter violation, we still have to address ethics violations, is that correct?
Yes, based on the, the document that he filed, yes, I would recommend because that it, the ethics policy has a separate process. Anytime an ethics violation or violation of our ethics policy is raised, and so that's a separate process.
But it's not part of this decision this evening to go into executive session on the charter complaint, is that correct?
Right, tonight is only a determination of whether Mr. Belay's filing rate alleges a violation of the charter that is grounds for removal, meaning did his paperwork indicate and provide substantiate a claim that he has either failed to maintain the qualifications for office under 3.02, that he has willfully violated any provision of the charter or any provision of the ethics, code of ethics that has been adopted in accordance with section 1105 of the charter that provides for removal or termination of employment. Whether he's been convicted of a felony, I don't believe that that was alleged or crime of moral perpetuity, or that he has failed to attend three consecutive regular meetings. The only information that, that has been provided to you likely falls within category B if you deem that he, that what he, what Mr. Belay has filed shows a willful violation of the charter or the ethics policy.
So I'm still asking if this is a two-step process that one is separate from the other.
Yes, sir.
That is correct.
Yes, sir. The ethics policy, ethics process, sorry, the charter process has two pieces. If you find that the first step, there is, there, the allegation is clear, and then there is a separate process to address the ethics complaint. So two complaints essentially in one document, one is about the charter and the other is about the ethics policy.
All right. Yeah, so we are not, we're not addressing the ethics policy tonight because that is where we will need to bring in outside legal. And once we do, once we consult with the outside legal, then we will set the date for that hearing. But right now it's just the charter and we just have to decide whether we believe it requires an executive session from this point. Yes, Frank?
Mayor, I'd like to read the last sentence of section 308 in response to Tim's question.
Yes.
And this has, this has to, I think the first part of Tim's question about what can the council do with respect to the charter. Last and obviously Aaron can correct me or amplify what it's, what it says. The decision of the city council shall be final and binding so long as is made in good faith and may in the discretion of the council include a lesser penalty of censure and or fine as provided in the ethics ordinance.
Anybody else on council, questions, comments?
Yes, I have a question. So. So what we're basically doing is determining whether the allegations are enough to have an executive session, correct? I mean, we're not saying that the allegation, I, I don't want to seem like we're looking at the allegations as course for removal without us knowing more about this. I mean.
Right. So the evidence.
That's my concern.
All, all the evidence would be presented, you know, at the.
Executive session.
Yeah, that's, yes. Right now, we're just, just trying to determine whether we should go in, should schedule an executive session or not.
Mr. Mayor, you know, you, if, if, if you, if the council determines that the allegations are of a nature that they indicate, they fall within the category, one of the four categories of alleged violations that are a basis for removal in section 3.08, you're not making a determination on the legal sufficiency or the adequacy of the evidence. It is completely possible for the council to make a determination that the allegation itself, the allegations give rise to take it to the next step and then based on the evidence that's provided in the executive session hearing, make a final determination that no violation of the charter was actually, actually occurred. And so no penalty would be assessed. If you, a determination after an executive session hearing could also result in a determination that there was no willful violation of it. However, there could be evidence to substantiate or to, to bring the council to find that some lesser penalty, for example, censure or a fine would be appropriate. So there, there is a wide range, but that determination could, would really only occur after a hearing during executive session. If you find this evening that the information provided to you by Mr. Belay does not substantiate a basis for some need for a hearing, then, then that's what you would need to find this evening and that part of the process would be over. You would still have to address the ethics complaint as a separate process, but the alleged violation of the charter would conclude.
Right. Anybody else?
During the executive session, do both parties get to address the council in that process? I mean, I, I understand Frank is a council member, but I, I also understand that Eric is feeling hurt and I, I want to make sure that whatever we do, we're addressing the feelings and the issue at hand and have some sort of remedy that's going to solve the problem and not make the problem worse. Whatever that is.
So council member has right to representation in the meeting and to question and cross examine all witnesses, but may not vote on the question of removal.
Okay. What about on?
And Eric would also be. Sorry.
He's an indispensable party to this matter. He would be involved in that executive session because it's his complaint and his evidence that would be discussed.
Got it. Thank you.
Yeah, reading through the process, it doesn't, I don't see where it actually mentions the person that has filed the complaint, what his role in the meeting would be. But I would assume.
That he's involved.
Would be able to present his side of the case during the, during this session. I don't think we, I don't think it stops at him just filing the, the complaint in writing. He gets to, he does get to address. Yes, Mr. Weatherly?
So, Mr. Mayor, my remarks probably directed more at Aaron. So basically what we're trying to do tonight is decide if these three statements that Eric made are enough to warrant going the next step, and that would be the pressure of the city manager to act upon his employment, made libelous slander comments upon my name and reputation, and has pressured and blackmailed the city council to act on basis accusations or lack of proof. So those, those are basically the three points that we're looking at, is that correct?
Mr. Mayor, that those are some of the allegations that he's made. You know, he, he has alleged violations of those 3.23, 4.01, and 4.07, and the statements that council member Weatherly read out fall under those particular sections as they're noted in Mr. Belay's complaint.
Yes, those three. Anybody else on council, questions, comments? Yes, Mr. Weatherly?
So if we find that there is basis for these three points, then this should move on into an executive session.
The executive session will not take place today. We would have to schedule.
Not today, but what we would be looking at down the road is to go into an executive session if we find these are enough basis to warrant an investigation.
That is correct. That is correct. That is, that is correct unless Counselor Robbins would like to have it held in open section. So normally it's executive, but it's up to him whether he wants it to continue an executive or if he wants it in open session. Yes, that'll have to be scheduled at a later time. Anyone else on council? All right, well, if that's everybody on council, I will open it up to public comments at this time. And Darcy, I have seen your hand up for quite some time, so.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Tidwell, and I will address the whole council, so I keep this as it should be. I just had a few questions. So when Don Bartho came to whoever and said, hey, I have a complaint, and you guys went into your office with Lori and Frank, why was there no legal representation from Aaron in that office to begin with, telling Frank he shouldn't speak openly on a recording? And number two, why was it so in fact that the recording get up onto Facebook where everybody could hear the recording, because I still haven't heard it, because I think it's hearsay, because I wasn't in the room? And then number three is why when Frank's letter, which was an open letter to someone that he posted, it was removed, so it's not up there. I actually didn't even read that either, which was on the North Shore neighbor. And so these are just some of the questions I have because personally, out of all of you, I think Frank is the only one that knows diddly about this city. Second, I would, we have already had our differences and I won't go into them here, but Frank is always honorable and at least honest, and all of you are like throwing him under a bus and it is upsetting me to no get out. And I want to know where his legal representation was in that meeting with Don Barthow.
Well, we had no idea what Don Barthow was bringing to us at that time, no legal was invited and so there were, there are just no legal was invited. You know, if, if Frank had chosen to leave the meeting and without, you know, until he had legal, that would have been on him, but it, that there was and there was nothing that indicated that any legal representation had to be present because we had no idea. Don just asked if he could meet with us on Friday morning. And you're not, the reason you didn't see all of this take place is because Don never filed an, an official complaint. So none of this procedure that would have normally taken place did not because nothing was ever filed with the city, so. Anybody else? Christina? Lucero? Christina Lucero.
So I have a question, based on, I guess, Don Barthow being a whistleblower or whatever, and then things that that Frank might have seen along the way, like he mentions. And he told Josh about these things, because they were personnel issues, and they weren't handled. At what point is it okay? And I don't want to be sued for libel, so I don't know, these are all hearsay. But I, at what point are they things that actually need to be dealt with with a staff member? If there are a list of things that he's seen and and problems and violations that he's seen, how can he not talk about that and try to make it right? That's one question. I have another one after that. How can he try to fix this?
Who, Frank?
Frank. If he's seen these things and emailed Aaron and Josh both, how how is that supposed to be rectified? And how are those things supposed to be corrected and violations corrected?
Okay. If Frank was not satisfied with the what had occurred between his conversation with city manager, then he could have brought it to council attention formally. But he had not chosen to do that. So I can only assume that he was satisfied with the response that he got from the city manager and the city attorney. So yes, Frank.
Mayor, this is getting to be interesting. I and Aaron's smiling. We may be having a hearing. And let me just say to you and the council, if I might, I'm going to go to exec. This is this isn't, this that's where it should be dealt with. I have a I have a statement that's one sentence that may answer the prior question. That's my response to it. And and Mayor, let me, let me suggest that you might not want to respond, make a response that I might want to make a response about here. And and that if the council feels like we need to visit about this in more detail, we ought to get to exec. Thanks.
Yeah, I was just trying to address the procedure portion of it, not any.
Yes, sir, but but the issues that are being raised, I believe, and I can be corrected, obviously, that are being raised by the members of the public relate to the substance or the facts that need to be discussed in exec. So I don't know how you respond to questions that relate to the to the substance and facts as opposed to the process.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to remind everyone, I I just want to remind us that our whole purpose here this evening is to decide whether the for the council to decide whether the complaint itself alleges a violation of the charter that's grounds for removal. We cannot discuss the substance. We're we're not here to make a decision on any evidence. The facts are not to be discussed. It's simply the allegations in the complaint. And so I would kindly ask that we keep focused on that. If you get questions from the public, they can ask questions, but I'm, my recommendation is to not respond until the appropriate time, and today is not the appropriate time.
Sorry, mine was mostly about the process of of how it should have gone down. And then my second question is, do we think it's time for an outside investigation now? Possibly.
The steps for the ethics policy complaints will require outside council. Yes, Mr. Durbin. Christina, you don't have the floor.
There we go. And I hope my question here or comment helps clarify this on Aaron. Let me know if I'm I'm mistaken, but what I what I believe I'm hearing you say is the purpose of tonight is for the council to determine whether or not the the paperwork and allegations filed by Eric Belay are sufficient to put the question before the council. In other words, in in legal legal world, we would say the pleadings are sufficient. It doesn't mean they're trying to decide what's true, what's not true, or or any ultimate answers to the questions, just whether the questions were properly raised through the paperwork. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. Second of all, my my the other thing that I see what's going on here is we seem to have kind of a tail wagging the dog situation. If I'm not mistaken, this gentleman was, well, was not the subject of the previous investigations performed by the city manager, because those were, one of them was an ethics investigation, the other was, I believe, a procedural investigation into the procurement procedures that have been followed. But I believe he was probably a central figure in those procurements that were being investigated. So and I believe had the council not been in such a rush to accept some sort of a of a no no finding, no guilt, nothing to see here result, that a proper investigation might have shed a lot more light on this, which would have been beneficial going forward. And it appears now that you're going to need to actually perform a real life investigation and get some real life facts from something that should have already been done. That's it. I'm not going to comment on the the procedures or anything else, but I think we've wasted an opportunity of not performing a proper investigation at the right time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck, Frank.
Yes, Ms. Marion.
I actually have just a real quick question. So what's before council right now is to determine if there was a violation of one or more of those allegations. Is that right? It doesn't have to be all of them, not to determine, but to determine if there's something there to take it to executive session. Is that right? And it doesn't have to be all of the the allegations?
No, it's it's, Mr. Mayor, it's not to determine whether an actual violation occurred. It's whether or not the paperwork filed by Mr. Belay raises issues that are within the scope of the charter under section 3.08. It raises a basis for further investigation, not an actual finding or determination of whether a violation actually occurred. Does it fit within the scope of that particular section is what we're looking at?
Thank you for clarifying.
Counselor Collins.
Yes, I think this would be an appropriate time for the mayor, Mr. Mayor, or Aaron to address the charges of Barthow and the steps that we took. Also referring it that it was referred to legal authorities to investigate. And if you'll please explain chapter and verse, the allegations of exceeding his authority to write a check, sequencing, and the other things, because people out here are looking for something that's not there. This has nothing to do with Barthow's charges. It's a totally separate event. But I would like to address Barthow with what we have found and just get this done with.
Yeah, I don't know if I I don't believe this is an appropriate time to necessarily address anything that Barthow brought forward, other than I'll make the statement that whether an investigation or some we we missed an opportunity or so is irrelevant, because no complaint was ever filed with the city, so. You know, but other than that, you know, I'm not gonna, I'm not going to discuss anything at regarding his comments or allegations or implications or anything like that. Paul Roberts. You're muted.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think that speaking to anything in the past, such as Counselor Collins was suggesting, would not be wise legally. Going into executive session and saying as little as possible at this point in time is probably the best position for the city, so as not to make itself vulnerable or open or giving Eric something that he could use in a lawsuit against the city. And I think the city needs to act several moves ahead in that regard and just play defense and work very smart right now and be very careful about what you say. Do it in an executive session, and that's it. One other point I'd like to make, Mr. Mayor. Right now, we're already down one council seat. I think Mr. Maybe I might have my my dates wrong, but I don't know if Mr. Williams, Council, Councilman Williams was having a medical procedure, or if he already had it, if he's going to have it, if he hasn't had it yet, then we're potentially down two council seats. And there is a possibility of being down three council seats if a worst case scenario has arrived at Councilman Robbins. Because of that, I would encourage you to consider calling a special, having a special call council meeting this week, three day notice, and get that seat filled, referring to Councilman, Council Place Two. And last thing, good luck, Councilman Robbins. You're a good man. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Weatherly.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Robbins has already requested that this go into executive session. I think that we should move to move this forward to a special meeting and to allow this to go in to executive session where we can hear the evidence. I personally do not feel, from what I've seen and from what I know of discussions between Mr. Robbins and the city manager, of the city manager's approach to taking care of the issues with Mr. Belay, that all of these accusations have basis. But I do believe that there is enough that the council needs to look at this. We need to take time. We need to listen to both sides, and then we need to go from there. I think that there is possibly some truth to the possibility of an ethics violation, but I do not, in my own eyes, from my own investigation, see and investigate a violation of the charter. So I think that we should go on and move to have a special meeting, go into executive session, hear the evidence, talk with Eric, talk with Mr. Robbins, and then go from there.
All right. Arch.
Yes, Mayor, I I feel the same as Mr. Weatherly. I believe that we should honor the request that that Councilman Robbins has asked, and that is to go into executive session and and go through all these different accusations, you might say, or the the violations that supposedly were committed, and talk about them individually and see if they actually do rise to some some level where we need to make a determination about what the next step is.
All right, thank you. Diane. Yes, Diane.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I just have a question for clarification, because I haven't read the document that was is being referenced here. But I I recall after, I believe this is correct, I recall after Don Bartlow's posited the situation in the August meeting, there was a public commentary that was written, I think, I think by you, Mayor, Mayor Ed, with regard to explanation and making public some of the information and talking about it in public. And I I'm just wondering, is was there, what's substantially different in in the two, the two situations? I'm just asking.
Well, my my op ed was just an opinion piece, and it didn't address anything with any staff personnel. That was my op ed. All right. So we I have read all the allegations. We've heard some recommendations by council members, so at this time I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we move to a special council meeting with executive session to look at these accusations and to hear information and to get proofs from the accused and the accuser.
I will second that. All right, I have the motion in a second by Mr. Collins. Just for legal purposes, I would like to know is that was that motion? Was that a proper, was that a good enough, proper motion? Aaron, did it cover all the bases?
Mr. Mayor, I understand the motion to be a motion to move to executive session to hear the evidence. And so that would suffice for the purpose of deciding whether the complaint alleges a violation that's grounds for removal under section 3.08.
Okay, so is move the proper word, or should we say, should the motion be to schedule an executive session?
Well, that's certainly something that the council needs to do, is to schedule it. I believe the Counselor Weatherly's motion was that it should go to executive session. Either either form is sufficient. At some point, we will need to schedule it, and the way that the charter reads, we need to make it, need to schedule it so that all the council members can be available for that.
Okay, so in the policy, ethics policy, there is a clear and defined number of days and and a timeline that must be met. I do not see that in the complaint process for the charter violation. So is there a specific timeline that we must adhere to, or is this just just whenever everyone is available?
Mr. Mayor, the you're you're absolutely correct that the charter does not specify a timeframe for consideration and for scheduling of this. What the charter does provide is that the the executive session may, the council may schedule and reschedule any such hearing for any reason, including convenience, to enable attendance by all members of the council. And so essentially, what that what we will need to do is find a date and time that all the council members, city council members can attend this hearing.
All right.
I have a question.
Is asking to speak.
Yes, Mr. Williams.
I'm getting ready to have shoulder replacement surgery on Wednesday. I do not know what the process is after my surgery or how long I will be down, but I'm just letting you know that I will know better after Wednesday. how I come out and I would contact the city and let them know where I stand on, when I could meet and go from there. I don't know the downtime. Excuse me?
Right. Understand, that was kind of what I was, why I brought the question upon the timeframe because it says, you know, it convenience.
Yeah, I go to the hospital tomorrow, so.
And I know, I know we can proceed without everybody in attendance, but I, I don't know that we should, you know, considering this. So, all right, so we will.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Ms. Weatherly.
Aaron said that if we need to, we can postpone it, so my suggestion would be that we aim possibly at next Monday. That will give Mr. Williams four days after his surgery. And then if he's unable, we can postpone it to a later date.
All right, what is, yeah, well, we'll just, we'll, we'll discuss the, the actual date. But yeah, we'll shoot, we'll shoot for as early as possible. Knowing that Mr. Williams does have his surgery and we'll have to take into consideration any other conflicts. But I say we would just shoot for as early as possible and Aaron and Sandra can get with everybody following this to set that date.
Mr. Mayor, you have a motion and a second on the table. There's been no vote?
Right. All right. We're just further discussion right now. Right, anybody else have anything? So yeah, if, if it's not approved, we won't have a date to set, so. Anyway, we have the motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Does this have to be a roll call vote? Should this be a roll call vote, Aaron?
Uh, no, sir. The charter does not require a roll call vote. It does require a more, a majority vote, so you need at least four ayes for the motion to pass.
Aye.
All right. So I heard the ayes. All those opposed, nay? Is that a nay, Frank?
No, sir. I'd like to be recognized.
Okay.
I did not register a nay. I believe I am supposed to abstain.
That's correct.
Yes. All right. So hearing zero nays, the motion carries five, five to zero with one abstain. Mr. Robbins. All right. I have a question, Aaron, on procedure, and this is with the ethics policy.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
So with the procedure requires that, that portion requires outside, does that, outside counsel, do we have to make a motion to bring in outside counsel at this time, or?
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to look to, I want to look at that a little closer. That item's actually not on the agenda for this evening. And so even if it does require, we wouldn't be able to vote on that this evening. So let me verify whether or not you have to have a vote of counsel. Obviously, the ethics policy requires you to have independent counsel. There's not an option to not address the ethics complaint. And so what the council will need to, need to determine is if they want to use the firm that is on retainer with the city for other purposes, or if you want to go with a different firm, if you want to seek a different firm for that assistance.
Okay, so because we're required, then it's, I interpret that as not needing a motion because we are required. We can't say yes or no.
That's correct.
Okay.
It, it's who and not whether, it's not whether you want to, it's who you want, who you want to choose for that assistance.
Okay. All right, so our, we have had the motion and it has passed, so we will, we will get with Aaron and the city secretary, and we will schedule a date for the executive session. And that is all that we have for this meeting, and I will call it adjourned at 6:16 PM. Thank you.
Thank you.